Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, and those joining us online for the special meeting of council, the Corporation of Municipalities of Central Elgin. Today is Tuesday, July the 11th, two thousand and twenty-three. I'd like to make note of a couple of visitors in the gallery. We have councillor Emmons from Southold, and I think it's Mr Van Oursbrunk, am I pronouncing that right? Thank you for attending today and. On that note, a call to order and a disclosure of peculiar interest in the general nature thereof. Anyone seeing none, our first presentation today is on the two thousand and twenty-four budget. And I look forward for an over, I look forward to the overview and I will pass it over to Ms Gupta Harit. Thank you, Archana.
Thank you for your time today, and I just want to give you a quick overview and timelines and process like how we do the budget at municipality of Central Elgin. So obviously, the last year you were just, you joined in December when the budget was already done. And this year it's like full budget with you as the council, so I'll move to the next slide please. So what I want to do an overview is I will talk about budget and strategic plan, how they are related. Then I'll have the proposed budget approach and then I'll talk about the process overview again, it's proposed because if there is any feedback and anything you want to change, I'm open to that and we can make that process work for you as council as it goes. Uh, then direction from council and then budget responsibilities by departments. Next slide please, I just want to give you an overview, what is the budget? So basically, when we talk about the budget, it's normally a financial plan that we lay out, right? So it's an estimation of revenue and expenses over the years that we expect to get in the future period, obviously, and it's compiled and overviewed over the time periods on periodic basis, I would say. It's also a financial plan for defined period, so we go single year or multi-year budgets. So there are different types of budgets. Then we talk about how budget and strategic plan are actually connected. So the strategic plan lays out the direction of the goals and the goals of the organization as well as the agendas or the guidelines that the council will provide to the organization for their term. And then while the budget looks at the financial side of. So whatever strategies and goals and directions the council will have, we'll work on that and look at the finances that we need to deliver to those goals. And then aside from earmarking resources and aligning to the spend with the goals, the budget aids in measuring the outcomes and also the planning contingencies. For example, COVID happened, right? So those kind of contingencies or floods that come on or something happens, which is beyond our control. So those kind of things also come in and we kind of plan for those contingencies as well. The budgets are normally fixed or dynamic. So most government budgets are fixed and they are fixed because we know what the revenue gonna be, which is basically taxes. And the council obviously decides upon what the tax is gonna be and they are based on the expenses that we forecast. That if we want to do the, say, this council says we want to do two major projects this year. This gonna cost this much, we'll go back, do our maths and bring it back to council and say this is what the tax rate would be and accordingly we'll work on the budget, again, direction from council. Dynamic budgets are mostly where the sales are the revenue. So private sector people, sometimes private sector companies have the dynamic ones because they can change their projects, they can change things based on what the revenue gonna be and they are based on that. My proposed approach is continuing with the same for last, what we have done for last two years, uh, where we have two-year operating and five-year capital budget. So last year, when you have visited the budget, you saw we had two-year operating, so now one year is bylaw, which we pass and adopt, the second year is in principle. So we get to revisit it every year based on the changes that we may see or money we may have or may not have or the grants we will get or not get. So it's based on that and it could be refined as well. And so this year as well, I'm proposing that we have two thousand and twenty-four to be approved and adopted and refine the two thousand and twenty-four from the last year that we had already proposed in principle. And then two thousand and twenty-five be approved in principle again. Capital budget, five years from two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-nine, uh, five years outline. We do have the ten-year asset management plan and mostly the capital budget is based on those uh, set management plans and we kind of forecast based on that, that what is required, what is coming in in the pipeline and we may have to focus other than the direction and other things that council may have or their um, strategic plan would dictate for any capital projects. So that would be the capital plan. Moving on to the next slide, so if we go with the proposed budget process. In last two years, uh, as you all are aware, like in two thousand and twenty-two budget, we, um, municipality of Central Elgin did won the, um, Government Financial Officers Association Award for the Budget. And that was based on the transparency and accountability and everything that that budget brought in to the process. And I would want to continue, I would propose to want to continue with the same process and do it that way. So August, September, I'm hoping that we can start with the data collection and, um, fix the timeline, what we want to do in future. And then October, we kind of dwell and identify the growth opportunities, any other, uh, you know, renewal kind of things or based on the strategic plan or your, um, you know, goals and agendas that you want to deliver, we kind of work on that. And then also, um, in November, we put the initial review with the council and say, this is where we look at and then get your guidance on that. And then also incorporate any additional pressures that we may see and all that kind of stuff. Uh, we also have been, uh, doing surveys with the, um, last two years, we have done surveys with the, um, residents as well, so we put the survey up, ask for what their priorities are, try to incorporate that as well. And the surveys are for fifteen to twenty days. And then once we have everything done, the final review with the council and the staff is done. That point of time, we actually post the budget online for a month at least or five weeks for the residents to review and provide any feedback that we may have. And then, uh, it comes back and then we finally present it to the council and get it uh, to adopted or whatever changes council may have. So we have been dealing with that kind of, uh, you know, uh, back and forth, uh, last two years as well and finally, uh, get the approval. This is taking us to January, February timeframe, when we will actually have council consideration and approval. Uh, if we start like next month and then two thousand and twenty-four, obviously, the implementation time. So it's like little bit longer the time period, but then it has involvement of all the council members, it has involvement of all the staff members. It has involvement of all the residents. Like basically, say in, uh, or some kind of, uh, interaction with them. Um, next slide please. So direction from council, this is what I'm looking from all of you today. I want to ensure that, um, you have some kind of, if you have anything in mind, I'm happy to listen to that as well and incorporate your feedback into the approach. If this doesn't work for you, any process-related guidance, I'm happy to hear about that too and incorporate into the, uh, timelines and everything. Uh, the other piece is your goals and strategies for, for this year, coming year, I mean, and future. Uh, because capital plan will dictate, uh, will need that as well. And then, um, obviously, as I said, uh, timelines for the budget, like what timelines you have in your mind to have it implemented for two thousand and twenty-four or approve it for two thousand and twenty-four. So those are the things I'm kind of hoping that to get out of, uh, this council today. And then, um, budget responsibilities. So Department of Asset Management, uh, I just want to make sure that we, um, I also pointed out the budget is a collaborative effort in this municipality. I don't work on budget at the corner of my desk. Each department is fully involved because they know what they are doing and they know their projects better. So they provide the input into the budget and then we and CEO, we collectively work on it and they, like, it's a wish list, whi- which everybody would provide. But based on what, how much money we have, how much grants we will be getting, we kind of go to what is important and what we can move to the next year or the following year. And that's when, that's what we bring to council. And then council's input is incorporated. So it's, that's why it's listed here, that Department of Asset Management Lloyd Perrin, Department of ICS Infrastructure and Community Services, Jeff Brooks, Department of Fire Services, Ray, and overall budget and general gov is taken care by me. And when I say overall and general gov means corporate services, which includes municipal councils budget as well. So that is taken care by me. So this is how it works, but I'm happy to hear any feedback, anything that you want me to kind of look into. And, uh, you know, any input, any feedback. Uh, one thing more, I have seen in many municipalities, like when I'm doing surveys, uh, council members have also been involved in kind of a committee or something. I'm happy to go that way too. That way, some council members can be part of that committee, as you were saying, reference committee today, um, Mr Graves. Um, there, there are, uh, like it can be a budget committee. And you can be part and parcel of all the meetings that we have because bi-weekly I do meet with senior staff, uh, to make sure that the project is this budget project is, our process is on time and everything, we meet the deadlines and we we are doing the due diligence that we should do that. So that is another proposal I have, if you would want to be part of the budget process as opposed to simply me coming back to you and, uh, reporting on things. So whatever works for this council. Thank you.
Questions or comments? Councillor Bachmann.
Uh, thank you very much for that information, Archana. Um, being new to this, I really appreciate any input that you bring to the table. Um, I guess, couple of things, um. This is for Lloyd and Jeff. Just as a refresh my memory thing, what is the timeline for you guys to get capital budget tenders out for major projects? What, what would a good timeline be for us to have the budget done and for you guys to get your tenders out? Uh, would our China's timeframe of January, February be appropriate?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, Councillor Bachmann, um, yeah, typically, uh, for large, uh, scale projects, we would like to have that tender out by, um, you know, typically December, uh, beginning of December with award potentially even as early as before Christmas. Um, that's when, through our experience, we've received the best pricing for construction projects. But, uh, a- as, you know, as long as we're, you know, have our tenders out by January, February, or February, we're usually pretty good, but the earlier, uh, typically the better.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, Councillor Connors, please?
Through you, Mayor, Mayor Sloan to Archana. Archana, you mentioned something about grants, do you have any idea what the grants would be this year? Is it usually a percentage of the budget or how does that exactly work?
So mostly the government, like the province or other, uh, you know, bigger organizations, provincial again, agencies would open up and they would give grants, so we never know what grants are coming. But as they come up, so we, we plan with the, our tax rates and all that stuff, but when the grants come in, we apply. And then we get the grant, so we replace that with the amounts. So there is no guarantee, and even when you apply the grants, it's, there is no guarantee that we're gonna get that. So it's like competition as well, first come, first served, and you have the money in. Uh, if they give you the money, it's fine if they don't give you, like you try. But the grants are no, um, like guaranteed thing for that, and you have to apply, uh, am I correct?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, so there's, there's two types of grants, there's conditional grants and unconditional grants, so things like gas tax funding from the federal government, that is provided annually. Um, it's not guaranteed, uh, guaranteed amount from year after year, uh, it will go up and down. Um, so those are types of things where, um, in the past, municipalities utilize those, uh, those types of uh, gas tax funding for, uh, projects that we can show reduction in greenhouse gases, so um, hot mix paving is, is one of those where we reduce maintenance, so we can show that we've, we've reduced greenhouse gas emissions and that is, uh, one of the reporting parameters that we have to report back to the federal government on. There's, there's unconditional grants, uh, and those are the ones that you make application to and secure funding, so in the past two years, this municipality is, is been very successful in obtaining those unconditional grants. Um, and those are, are things like the DMAP funding for the Federal Harbor, Curry Boulevard, uh, sidewalk. Um, we've se- secured funding in the past for the elevator in the Belmont Arena. Um, Turvy Park, uh, at, sorry, uh, Eastwood Park rather, uh, and Union Street Park, so all said and told, we're almost nine million.
Nine point two.
Nine point two and, and in, uh, in those types of grants, which is unheard of in Central Elgin, I, I can tell you, uh, and for most smaller municipalities like ourselves, so we've been very successful in that. One of the things that get looked at when those grant funds are being, um, uh, awarded to municipalities is, uh, the municipality's level of preparedness to deal with your assets. So they look at detailed asset management plans, should, and we're able to show that we have a plan in place and that is being followed or we have been able to in the past. Um, and that, uh, those grants go to support that. There used to be, I'm showing my age now, but there used to be a kind of a philosophy that grants were provided to municipalities that uh, didn't have their financial house in order and the argument was, well, we can't afford to do it. Uh, and the governments, upper levels of government have moved away from that type of process and they reward good behavior and good financial management rather than ones that choose not to take and plan for financial purposes.
That nine point two that you alluded to, uh, sorry, through you, Mayor, uh, is that over a period of five years, three years?
Yeah, it depends, uh, so those, you have a, it's for a, a very specific project. Uh, the DMAP, I, I believe, has to be spent by two thousand and twenty-nine? Yeah, I believe, so, uh, while it's, you know, the total, the total project cost is approximately seventeen million dollars, we receive six point eight of that, uh, and we have till the end of two thousand and twenty-nine to, to expend those funds.
Thank you. Oh, Mr. Brooks?
I, I, I just add that nine point two million in grant funding, those, that was awarded to the municipality between two thousand and twenty and and two thousand and twenty, well, the end of two thousand and twenty-two, actually, so within a three-year, uh, span.
Thank you, Councillor Bachmann.
We actually have someone in, is that a CAO responsibility to, to follow up on grants and grant applications or is, is this generally, uh, spread out the wealth type thing?
Your management team operates as, as a team, so, uh, one director may be made aware of a, a grant application for accessibility, for example, for the Belmont Arena. Another one may be, uh, made aware of, you know, DMAP funding for, uh, climate control type projects, so but once we're aware, it's, it's all hands on deck and write the application, so.
Councillor Connors?
No, one final one, and this may be premature, as I know we're gonna talk about, uh, um, our strategic plan today, but, you know, one of the things, uh, alluding to that Councillor Bachmann talked about was tendering projects, and I know that we went through something with Front Street. And I know that Councillor Watson and the mayor and Councillor Graham all met with the Construction Association, et cetera, and they basically told us that we would be smarter to tender in the later summer and, uh, and maybe sacrifice one product for another to save money, so how does that affect or will that be affected by the budget and the strategic plan, et cetera? How does that work?
Sir, uh, to you, Mr. Mayor, so, um, I wasn't part of that conversation, I can tell you what history has shown is that municipalities that get out of the gate, uh, by the, by the, the late fall or, or early winter, uh, tend to take and get better pricing. And the reason being, and I believe, uh, staff have, um, provided this information to council in the past, is that uh, typically, these types of contractors, civil contractors or unionized, uh, contractors, they try to take and secure their best operators, their best employees, uh, and get the, the, uh, get them working as soon as possible because construction, we are in Canada, lots of times, uh, you know, unionized employees get laid off in the late fall, uh, and, and don't work and they want to work. Uh, so that contractor, that unionized contractor will typically bid that, that tender that goes out in December at a reduced or even no profit margin, uh, in order to secure those good employees, those equipment operators, those labors whereby they have the cream of the crop for the rest of their construction season. And that's how they make up their revenue, so they, they try to get in early, so, you know, to tender in the fall, yeah, falls, fall works, but, uh, I can tell you in the last thirty-three years, December works quite well too. And you usually get better pricing when you go to tender, you know, in December. If you have to get into January, fine, but know that this is kind of the norm for municipalities and even the private sector now that they realize that, you know, the sooner they get out for tender, the better. So.
Thank you, thank you, sir, go ahead.
I'm, I'm well aware that they try, the contractors, I come from the private side and the, I was a contractor, so well aware of what the, the mindset is and how they function and they wanna make sure they have work for their good people and I understand that. But the question was more centered around, uh, with the feedback we received from the London Construction Association. Um, they alluded to the fact, and correct me if I'm wrong, but they alluded to the fact that we would be tendering late summer, early fall to get the best pricing and sacrificing one piece, one material for another material, so we could get very good pricing and reduce our costs from five foot, five point one million down to, I don't know what the number will be, but uh, so what my question centered around was, with a strategic plan, we're gonna be talking about it today, with the budget not being approved until, how does this affect us going out for tender on Front Street?
Mr. Baron?
Well, I don't think it does affect you going out for tender for Front Street, you know, there's still money based on council's decision for budget in two thousand and twenty-three, there's still monies that have to be raised to, you know, to continue with Front Street because council passes zero percent budget. So, you know, in light of not having a budget passed, you know, staff would caution that you go to tender because at this point, w- we don't know what council's thought, thoughts are with respect to any capital projects.
Thank you, any other questions or comments? If I can get a mover and a seconder? Well, I'm told here that I need a mover and a seconder, but is that okay? Okay, Councillor Watson, Councillor Connors.
Here's the, and the motion reads, move by Councillor Watson, seconded by Councillor Connors, that the presentation from the Director of Fin- Financial Services Treasurer, dated July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, be received and filed.
All those in favor? Posed, carried, strategic planning, who will be speaking about, oh, Mr. Graves, please?
Thank you, we'll get the first slide up, so, um, I think I've circulated some of this material, um, I don't know, a week or two ago, and I just wanted to review it, uh, with you to talk through the process of, uh, developing a, a strategic plan, which, uh, is really a cornerstone of uh, information that guides, um, both council and staff, uh, as you move forward. So if we can have the next slide, please. The purpose of a strategic plan is to provide that overall direction to the decisions being made by the municipality and it it sets realistic goals, and I've seen lots of different types of strategic plans and the best ones are the ones that you can really come up with, with goals and objectives that are actually obtainable, there are lots of fluffy strategic plans that people spend the time to author and work on and then they just sit someplace because there's not any real teeth or mechanism to make them happen, so you really wanna, at the end of the day, come up with a crisp set of goals and action plans uh, that you want to implement and you wanna set time horizons for implementing them. And you wanna, um, you know, check up on those to see how, uh, how it's moving forward. Um, Archana's already talked about how a strategic plan can guide things such as, uh, budget priorities. It can guide your overall organization in terms of where you're heading and, and many, many other things, and it also informs the public. Um, strategic plan, um, much like a budget process, um, really, uh, sets out to capture information from your ratepayers, from the residents, residents and stakeholders in the community and bring that information back to the table and, uh, allows, uh, good discussion, uh, around the council table, um, with administration to develop your goals and objectives. You know, the next slide, please. So the basic components of a strategic plan is you, you're gonna start sort of on a big vision, uh, exercise um, in, in terms of, uh, defining, um, you know, where you see Central Elgin, uh, being holistically. I think a interesting thing about a strategic planning process, particularly in a municipality like Central Elgin is it really lifts everybody's thinking and, and I'll use this analogy, from an individual ward system to an overall corporate system. So that you're thinking about the municipality as a whole, and that's really important. Not to say that some of these specific goals might draw down to a ward basis, but you really wanna think you, you're thinking as a corporation for the entire municipality and that's where you really want, where you wanna end up. And as I already mentioned, you, you wanna, uh, develop a list of very specific, um, uh, action items at the end of the day that, uh, that you are council and, and administration are accountable for, for, and that they're reported on. And you can, you can track them, so, uh, I'm gonna sound like a broken record when I come back to this whole world about being realistic goals and realistic action things, you know, you have to have, you're not gonna develop some action plans that, you know, it's gonna cost some enormous amount of money that you're never gonna have to, to deal with, so you gotta think about what your resources are, human resources, community resources, all of your resources are to implement the actions within a strategic plan. Next slide, please. So how do we, how do we get to a strategic plan? Well, um, first of all, there needs to be a commitment to undertake it. Um, it does involve some time and it involves some dollars, um. Probably me, uh, um, and those balance out each other, but I think the most important part of that is the time. Uh, and to be able to focus on it and to be able to have a good discussion um, to, to bring it together. I already talked about the consultation process with, uh, with key stake, stakeholders and community and the residents and setting up a platform where people can, uh, can voice their opinion and, and offer suggestions. Usually, a strategic plan involves engagement of a stakeholder that has oversight and guides the discussion um, and guides the technical, technical points of the, uh, of the process. Sessions are scheduled with council and senior administration to brainstorm and to develop those goals and action plans. Um, and then it's really important to communicate that plan back to the stakeholders in the community. Once you develop it in, in a draft form, you can put it out there again. Um, and, um, and ultimately, uh, it would, it would come back for endorsement by council and then, as I've said, uh, the, the goal of, uh, monitoring the prog- progress on individual acts and action items. In terms of, next slide, please, in terms of where Central Elgin is at or has been at with, uh, strategic plan, I think late last fall, uh, facilitator was engaged to begin the process and to, uh, gain a feedback from residents, I've done a little bit more, um, um, research on that and, um, there were comments that were received and compiled in a document, and I don't think that's been back in front of council, that needs to get back to council. But there was an online survey that was, uh, implemented in January of two thousand and twenty-three. Two hundred and twenty, two hundred and seven respondents from across the community had input into the, uh, comments. And from that, uh, document, the facilitator of the day, um, looked at all those and compiled the, um, comments that were similar and started to develop some common themes throughout, uh, the information that was obtained, so, um, depending on where council wants to go, I think one of the first steps is depending on where council wants to go, I think one of the first steps is to get that document to you so that you can read through that and see all the comments that, uh, were provided by the residents and, um, how the common themes started to emerge. In terms of moving forward, uh, and this doesn't have to be like months and months of work. It's, at this point in time, I think we're talking about maybe a, a few, few, uh, sort of day, uh, sessions over a few days to bring a, a facilitator back together again and, and pull all that information unless council wants to expand, uh, once you've seen it, but, um, the intent would be to, uh, to engage a facilitator to, uh, work with that document that has been provided and work with council administration and try and crisp up some specific goals. You're going to hear from the community through that document in terms of how they feel. Um, and, um, and, and move forward. So I, I don't think it needs to be, uh, a long protracted, uh, process. The last thing I, I did, and I guess I kind of, uh, the next slide, please. Um, this, this is a little bit dated now, but I just use as an example because it was one I was familiar to. And at the end of the day, when I was with the city, our, our strategic plan wasn't like a two-hundred-page document. It actually was a four-page leaflet when it was drilled down. And the last page was a very simple table of goals and commitments. Um, that were compartmentalized into sort of service areas in the community. And I think once a quarter, uh, administration actually developed a report card um, to council on each one of those commitments. Said, here's where, here's what we decided we wanted to do over the course of three or four years. And here's where it's at. And here's where we need to have more focus. Here's where we're falling behind, or here's where we're ahead of the game. And, uh, it was a very, very meaningful, uh, meaningful tool to have. And I know it'll be meaningful for, for Central Algon to have as well in some form. So I've also talked to other, um, CAOs along the way who've gone through a strategic process and, and they had just completed a process and they've got a two-hundred-page document sitting there. They said, now what I do with it? Now that it's sitting, that's, that's not where you want to be. You want to have something that's got some meat on the bone so that you can pick it up and, and have it in front of you and, and work with you. So, um, I offer that to you as sort of, you know, background on strategic planning and would suggest that, uh, you know, you would may want to consider moving forward fairly quickly and, and getting that underway if that's the will of council. I'm open for any questions.
Thanks very much, Mr. Graves. Um, que- questions from the group? Oops. Order. Uh, Counselor Halpin.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor Sloan, Mr. Graves. I have two questions. Uh, the first is, uh, have you checked in with Ms. Kirkman about whether she is willing to resume the process she had started, uh, in twenty twenty-two? And the second question is, um, I had the understanding that the survey that she had begun had been taken down off our website, sort of prematurely to what she had intended. Do you know whether she feels that she got as much feedback from the community as she needed?
It's Graves.
Oh, I can't speak to the last, uh, question. I can ask that question. I, I know that she compiled all the information. So I, I'm just for me looking at, I assume they had been completed, but I, I don't know that for fact. Uh, in speaking with her and so, uh, the, um, municipality had been using a consulting firm. Uh, it's called Mischievous Cats, uh, but very, very well known in the strategic planning world, uh, for municipal and sort of government agencies. Um, and, um, I asked about the availability, about their availability. And, um, she is totally booked until September, so it will be early September when, if you were going to reactivate her services, that that could be made available.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Questions or comments? Counselor Connors.
So through you, Mayor, uh, Mr. Graves, um, I, you know, my comment would be to reengage a facilitator of some sort because this is our first really strategic plan we're going to put together. Second part of it is, is that when our, uh, our channel spoke, she spoke about when we did the budgets and we laid out a lot of things for two thousand twenty-four already, you know, from a, from an asset management and from a, a capital project budget because we project five years out. So I think that there, there's groundwork there, um, that we could have input on, but using the facilitator, go that route. Now, when you talk about advertising on our, on our website, we get two hundred and twenty-one people responding out of roughly thirteen or fourteen thousand. I mean, it's a very small percentage, right? I think we're better off probably getting feedback from town halls, like where we, we, we had the town halls and we're getting feedback from them. Plus, in addition to that, uh, other avenues that we could probably reach out to the community and find out what they want to do and which way they want to go.
Thank you, Counselor Connors. Counselor Halpin.
Thank you through you, Mayor Sloan. Um, I'm not sure that we can discount the value of the digital method simply because, uh, my understanding from Mr. Shipway was that a member of council had, uh, directed that that survey was to be taken down off the website and so it was never really finished.
Uh, Counselor Connors.
Fair enough, but if we're going to get anything less than ten percent, I mean, is it really valid? I mean, are ten percent of the people going to speak for the entire Central Algon is what my point would be.
Understood, Counselor Connors. I think Mr. Graves is going to speak. Thank you.
Yeah, I wanted, I'll speak, um, about the validity of surveys and we, we went through this a lot. Whether it was a budget survey or any kind of a survey, you think, hey, what's the right number? How do you penetrate? And the biggest thing is how do you penetrate your community to, to, uh, get the threshold that you're comfortable with. And I don't think there's, I mean, there's a technically, if you take statistics, there's a right number. But because then, you know, then the, the answers start to get repetitive kind of thing. So, uh, I can, I will check with, um, with the consultant on a couple of things. First of all, about if, uh, she thinks that there's additional mileage to be had to go back out to the community. Um, and also on timelines and, um, and I know I've been speaking with the Director of Finance that although September is a little bit off, if we could, if it was an opportunity to do, have some sessions at the beginning of September, I believe it would still be in time to, uh, assist greatly with the budget process. Um, if, if, as long as it was early enough in September, but it would have to be early. Um, so I can do that homework over the next few days and see if I can get some more definitions. And this would come back to council in the form of a report that you would endorse to move forward and, and, and see it go. So.
Thanks, Mr. Grace. The other point is Dave, or Counselor Connors, that even your town halls, right? If you look at Port Stanley, Belmont and Lynnhurst, we average between thirty and thirty-seven, six people. Is that approximately right? So in a way, it's hard to get everybody's voice. Um, I, I think that, uh, you know, we, we experience that. People have busy schedules and maybe not everyone's thinking about municipal politics as much, but I, I mean, I think the digital component is, is key. Um, our channel, you have a, you're kind of.
Thank you. So whatever feedback we have gotten from, um, you know, your town halls and everything, that is also to be incorporated. That doesn't mean we're going to discount that kind of thing, right? So every, every venue that we can use, we will utilize for whether it's budget survey, whether it's, um, you know, strategic plan survey. But last year as well, and last, to last year too, when we posted the budget, there was very few. I think first year we only got hundred comments. But last year we had over more than two hundred fifty comments for the budget survey. So people didn't know, but now they're knowing more and more about the, you know, their engagement. So they're getting engaged as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Connors. Good. Other questions or comments? If I get a mover and a seconder, please. Counselor Halpin, Counselor Connors.
Mayor Stoll, the motion reads move by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Counselor Connors. That the presentation from the interim CIO clerk dated July eleventh, twenty twenty-three be received and filed.
All those in favor? Opposed, carried. Now, who will be speaking about our sewage treatment file? Mr. Brooks. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will just wait to, to get the, uh, presentation up on the DVD here. Okay, uh, so I'd like to discuss an opportunity that has, uh, come about with the township of Southold regarding our wastewater system. Uh, the municipality has the opportunity to, to discuss a shared servicing agreement with Southold Township, which could provide mutual benefits to both municipalities. Specifically for Central Algon, it could provide additional revenue through connection charges from Southold. Uh, this could be used to help, uh, fund some of the large investment that has already been made in the, uh, Central Algon wastewater treatment plant down in Port Stanley. So I'll take you through a number of slides here. Uh, feel free to ask questions as we go along. And, uh, we'll have some time for questions, uh, at the end as well. So. Okay, so, uh, the first slide here, bring it up on my computer. Uh, this is a pie chart showing, uh, the expenses, uh, involved with the wastewater system in Central Algon. So you can see the large blue purple area, uh, is capital debt. So a lot of that has been incurred to construct the wastewater treatment plant, which costs roughly fifteen million dollars back in twenty eighteen. Uh, there's been some other capital projects that have contributed to that capital debt, but when you look at our overall budget for wastewater, more than half of it is just paying off debt from previous capital projects. So the current mechanical extended aeration wastewater treatment plant in Port Stanley was constructed in twenty eighteen to replace the aerated lagoon system which had existence, existed since the nineteen seventies. The lagoons were nearing operational capacity when the environmental assessment was undertaken in twenty fourteen, which selected the mechanical plant as the preferred alternative. The previous lagoons had a rated capacity of twenty-one hundred meters, cubic meters per day, but operationally we could only handle half of that, which, uh, led us to this mechanical plant. As I mentioned, the upgraded facility costs the municipality fifteen million dollars. It was con- constructed, uh, uh, as a combined project with the upgrades of pump station fifty-two down near the visitor's center and pump station fifty-one over near the arena on Carlo Road. So the total price of that combined project was in around eighteen million dollars. Uh, I believe the municipality received about three million dollars in grant funding for that project. So as I said, the upgraded facility costs roughly fifteen million dollars, but if you were to build that same, uh, facility today, you'd probably be looking closer to twenty million dollars in twenty twenty-three dollars. Uh, the plant is operated under an environmental compliance approval from MECP, which, um, dictates how that plan is run and the affluent targets that, uh, we're set to achieve. The current plant capacity under the ECA is two thousand three hundred and forty-three cubic meters per day. Uh, currently we average about eleven hundred cubic meters into the plant with approximately seventeen hundred connections from the Port Stanley area. We've already committed two hundred and fifty cubic meters to the Turville Farm Development in Southold, which is up Union Road. That development has not yet started, but, uh, we would expect over the next couple of years that we should see movement on that development. And we'll start to see flows from that. What's unique about this wa- wastewater treatment facility is we have the lagoon system, which was left over from the previous system, which offers fifty-three thousand cubic meters of additional emergency storage, uh, for high flow events. So while I mentioned that we, on an average day, we would see roughly eleven hundred cubic meters, uh, a day into the plant. On a day like last week where we had three or four inches of rain, we might see two or three times that amount of flow into the plant. So we're able to bypass the plant, uh, store the, um, sewage in the lagoons and then pump it back through the plant, treat it, and then release it back into, uh, Kettle Creek. The annual operating costs of the plant, uh, are two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, uh, which are paid for through revenue from wastewater rates. So that goes to, um, utility rates, uh, equipment and labor, those sorts of things, uh, chemicals, all the things that go into operating that plant. What's also unique about this plant is the plant was designed to accommodate future expansion as the municipality experiences growth. So right now we're able to handle twenty-three hundred cubic meters per day. With the addition of another bioreactor, we would be able to go up to approximately thirty-five hundred cubic meters. And it's expandable beyond that as well. So this slide here, uh, shows the location of the wastewater treatment plant up on Scotch Line. So up on the top left-hand corner, you can see the, what looks like four lagoons. There are two remaining and two have been turned into a naturalized area. Uh, the plant is just to the east of the, uh, most easterly lagoon. And what you see in red there is a force main from, uh, pump station fifty-one on Carlo Road, which, uh, pumps flow up into the plant. Okay, so the Union area. In twenty twenty-one, uh, an environmental assessment was undertaken to review servicing options for the Union area. The Union area will be serviced by a pump station, which pump flows, which ultimately will end up in the Port Stanley wastewater treatment plant. The EA suggested a preferred alternative of a pump station to be located at the corner of Sparta Line and Sunset Drive with a force main to be constructed south down Sunset and, which would outlet into the sanitary sewer collection system at East Road. It's generally understood that the cost to construct this system would be front-ended by the developers wishing to develop, uh, uh, residential in Union and based on, you know, somewhat recent conversations, it's expected that within the next couple of years, uh, developers, uh, would be wishing to proceed with that development.
Mr. Brooks, when you say the developers would pay for that, would that be the expansion?
So that would be, no. So when I say that, the developers would pay for the pump station that's to be located so that, uh, that sewage could be pumped to Port Stanley and then end up into the wastewater treatment.
And, and you said the Turbo Farm was about two fifty?
That's correct.
We're using eleven hundred now. So let's say with Union, if we added two fifty, that'd be five hundred. So we're at half capacity now, but with Turville and Union, we're, we're getting closer to the two, three, four, three.
Yeah, that's correct. So, you know, when we look at real world numbers, uh, we have currently have roughly seventeen hundred connections into the plant and we're on an average day, we're getting less than half of the capacity. So when you look at it from a real world perspective, we would expect that we would almost be able to double the number of connections and still, uh, be within that, uh, twenty-three, forty-three capacity. Now, theoretical calculations might tell you otherwise, but we operate, uh, um, as far as wastewater treatment goes, uh, through average day flow. And we're lucky in that we have that emergency storage in the lagoon so that when we do experience high flows, we are able to divert flows into the lagoons at which time capacity frees up in the plant. We're able to pump it back through the plant and treat it. So this, uh, next one here is just a, a, a map showing the proposed sanitary pumping station in Union uh, in the force main south, uh, to Port Stanley. So we'll dive back into this one here in a few slides. So next slide here, uh, so now, uh, Southold Township, uh, Southold completed an environmental assessment in twenty twenty-one to study uh, sanitary servicing options for the Sheddon and Fingall area. Uh, the study assumed that no capacity was available at Port Stanley wastewater treatment plant and that the preferred solution was a packaged treatment plant south of Sheddon. Now, Southold is having, is experiencing some issues, uh, with their package plant that they already have, uh, up in Talbotville. Um, so through conversations with staff at Central Algon and Southold, uh, discussions have been had over revisiting that EA and looking at directing flows from the Sheddon and Fingall area down to the wastewater treatment plant in Port Stanley. And to treat the Port Stanley area, as I mentioned earlier, it's expandable, uh, as more of a regional facility. Um, and that's looked, uh, kindly upon by the Ministry of Environment. So Southold staff have, uh, taken this to Southold Council and Southold Council has directed their staff to, uh, pursue this, um, option with Central Algon and pursue negotiations uh, with Central Algon. Southold, uh, for full, full buildout of Sheddon and Fingall. Southold for full, full build out of Sheddon and Fingal would be looking for eleven hundred and twenty four cubic meters. Per day of capacity at the Port Stanley plant. So again, that's for development area in Sheddon and Fingal. So while they're looking for eleven hundred and twenty four cubic meters, that's not all going to happen at day one. That's going to happen over a number of years as development occurs in, in Southold. So the next slide here, looking at capacity. Again, there is currently approximately twelve hundred cubic meters per day of capacity remaining at the Port Stanley plant without any further expansion. Again, two hundred and fifty cubic meters is committed to the turbo farm. Whether we actually receive two hundred and fifty cubic meters on an average day, we may not. So based on actual flows, as I mentioned earlier, this would allow for the development of approximately double the number of connections we currently have. Or about an additional sixteen hundred connections. Now, by granting capacity to Southold, it would mean that upgrades would be required sooner than otherwise at the wastewater treatment plant. However, financial compensation would be provided by Southold to offset some of these costs that we would incur.
Particular the cost, so that would just be, that's, that's not expansion. That's just in, on the current facility, some enhancements. Do you have any idea of budget?
As far as.
Is it significant?
Connection, a connection fee?
Well, in the sense of, I mean, that would obviously be handled by Southold, but the actual plant itself, when you're talking about upgrades that would be required sooner than later. Is there any kind of an idea of what the budget would be for that, Jeff?
I don't have a budget. I'll get into a little bit of that later in the.
Okay, sorry.
Here, so. So financial considerations for shared servicing. Central Logan and Southold could consider a shared servicing agreement. Southold customers would pay the same wastewater rates as existing Central Logan customers. So there would be a base charge in a. A collection fee based on your water consumption, same as Central Logan. And these additional rates would help to fund our operating costs. In Central Logan for wastewater. So we be experiencing a benefit by collecting those. Rates. An agreement would spell out how the connection charges from Southold are paid to Central Logan. Connection charges would include funds that would help Central Logan pay down the debt. It incurred through the construction of the plant. The connection charges would also help fund future upgrades and expansion to the plant. Central Logan currently has two agreements in place for shared servicing, the first being with the city of Saint Thomas, and that's for the Saint Thomas kind of suburban area, Eastwood and Lynnhurst. And the second with Southold for the turbo farm development. The existing sanitary servicing agreement with the city of Saint Thomas. Provides Central Logan three thousand four hundred and ninety eight cubic meters per day of capacity at the Saint Thomas Pollution Control Plant. Central Logan pays the city of Saint Thomas their rates for collection. We also pay Saint Thomas upon a building permit and existing works charge. And the city of Saint Thomas development charge for the type of building to which the permit relates, so. It's roughly around twenty one hundred dollars per single family home that the municipality pays Saint Thomas for a connection charge. Also, in the Saint Thomas agreement, Central Logan is responsible for costs relating to the expansion of the Saint Thomas Pollution Control Plant. So that's a long calculation and that has to do with the amount of DCs that Saint Thomas currently has in the bank. And the amount of unused capacity out of that thirty four ninety eight that Central Logan has remaining. So an example that could cost as much as four million dollars at some point in the future. Or more. And then additionally, Central Logan is to pay one third of payment in lieu of parkland if the municipality decides to take. Payment in lieu of parkland for development in the Saint Thomas area. The existing sanitary servicing agreement with Southold. So this has to do with the turbo farms development on Union Road. Southold is allocated two hundred and fifty cubic meters of capacity at the Port Stanley wastewater treatment plant. Southold pays the Central Logan collection rates, again, the base charge and the collection fee. And for each new connection, Southold shall pay to Central Logan a connection charge being no less than thirteen thousand four hundred and twenty five dollars. So that kind of spells out. You know, our existing agreements, obviously a new agreement with Southold should council wish to proceed would be negotiated. And there are other ways to do it. You could look at DC charges, that sort of thing to. Come up with a rate for connection charges. So next slide here, back to the Union area EA. So as I mentioned earlier, the Union area EA selected a preferred option of a pump station and force main down Sunset Road. Into the existing collect, collection system. Since that EA was closed in twenty twenty one, staff took on a project for the consolidated linear infrastructure. Environmental compliance approval. And staff have found that there are areas in downstream in the collection areas of concern. Especially with additional flows coming from Union. There are downstream bottlenecks in the collection system, specifically in the gravity sanitary sewers from. Just north of Warren Street, all the way down to pump station fifty one. So there are a number of runs of sewer that would need to be upgraded in order to connect Union to Port Stanley. In addition to that, pump station fifty one, which is the main pump station in Port Stanley, which pumps all flow. From Port Stanley up to the wastewater treatment plant would require expansion. However, there's no room for expansion on the site it's currently located. So another site would have to be selected and another pump station would need to be constructed. In order to accommodate flows from Union. So the environmental assessment for Union considered an option for routing the force main from Union. Directly west through Southold to directly to the wastewater treatment plant, which would bypass Port Stanley. However, it considered Sunset the preferred option. It's noted, however, that the EA did not consider required upgrades to the collection system in Port Stanley when making that. Recommendation. When taking into consideration the upgrades to the collection system, routing flows from Union directly to the wastewater treatment plant may be a more economical solution. So staff have come up with a cost comparison in house here comparing building a pump station and force main on Sunset. And then building a pump station and or three pump stations and force mains through Southold to take that flow directly to the wastewater treatment plant. So the first one here is. Flows from Union to Port Stanley via Sunset Drive. So the pump station and force main are estimated to cost roughly four and a half million dollars. And that would pump it directly into the collection system. However, required upgrades to the collection system. Being the upsized gravity sewer and new pump station are estimated to cost eleven point seven million dollars. So when you combine those two costs, the total cost is sixteen point one million dollars. Now, the next one here, we've priced out taking flows from Union via force main through Southold and that would be to head. From Sparta line and Sunset directly west down Sparta line, down Sparta line, down to the. Union Road and Sparta line intersection. So that cost would be five point one million dollars for just that force main and that one pump station in Union. Another pump station would be required at the turbo farm. Where the Southold development is. And that pump station would pump flows from the turbo farm to Coon Road down Union Road. That cost is four point four million, assuming that there would be somewhat of a cost share between Southold and Central Logan. Because Southold is also required to pump flows from the turbo farm into the collection system in Port Stanley. The next cost would be another cost shared option, which would be a third pump station at the intersection of Coon Road and Union Road. And a force main from there directly to the wastewater treatment plant. And that cost is estimated at four and a half million dollars. So when you compile those costs. Going from Union through Southold directly to the wastewater treatment plant and bypassing Port Stanley. The estimated cost is thirteen point nine million. So staff believe we can save roughly two million dollars by going through the back way through Southold. Bypassing the Port Stanley collection system and not, which would require no upgrades to the Port Stanley system. So next, next slide here. So. Next steps here. No council direction is required today. This is just an information center to introduce council to this topic. Staff would bring a report back for council's consideration with regards to shared servicing with Southold. And providing Southold capacity to the wastewater treatment plant. Staff would also bring forward a report recommending the Union EA be reopened and possibly amended to take another look at routing flows from Union through Southold. They are bypassing the Port Stanley collection system and eliminating the needs for upgrades to the collection system. So basically, we have a consultant, take another look at that EA. With the information that we now have in the collection system and take another look and just confirm that it would in fact be cheaper to go the back way through Southold. And then the. Third step would be as part of this process, staff would recommend that the municipality hire a consultant to prepare. Somewhat of a roadmap for the wastewater treatment plant. So that we can identify timelines and expected costs that the municipality would incur for. Any future expansion or upgrades that would be required to the wastewater treatment plant. One, as Union gets developed and two, as potentially Southold develops if. Council wish to grant capacity to the Sheddon and Fingal area. And then that would lay out all of our costs. We'd be able to head into this, you know, negotiation with Southold with our eyes wide open and know exactly what. Our costs are going to be so that we can negotiate a good agreement for both sides. So. Turn it over to council if council has any questions.
Thanks very much, Mister Brooks. I have a quick question. What are the options if I'm our friends at Southold? What are the options if they don't come to Central Logan? What would they do?
Their, their EA dictated a package plant to be placed just south of Sheddon. Which would treat flows in Southold and. Let that affluent go into Kettle Creek. Now I know that through their EA process and through the assimilated capacity studies done in their process. The affluent quality was quite stringent on the affluent coming out of their plant. So they would need to, you know, upgrade their plant even further than what Central Logans is based on. While their affluent, affluent quality would be, need to be higher than what we're able to discharge from the Port Stanley plant. So that's kind of their other option is a package plant.
Package plant. Thank you. Counselor Bachman.
Thanks very much, Jeff. What are the timelines on both of those projects? Or is it three to five or what are we looking at?
Well, we would expect here within the next couple of years, Union to, or developers wanting to start developing in Union. And I know in talking with staff from Southold, the pressure has started to be applied from development. The development community, community up in Southold as they would like to be ready to develop in the very new, near future.
Thank you, Counselor Connors, please.
To you, Mayor. Just a quick, quick one. So. What responsibility would the developers have here in paying for some of this rather than just the taxpayers?
Mister Brooks.
Well, that's ultimately up to a negotiation between the municipality and the development community now. It's been the position of the municipality over the last couple of years that the developers would front end the cost of. The pump station and force main in Union, that estimated cost based on the EA was around four and a half million dollars. Now, you know, how much of a contribution would be made by Central Logan? That's up for negotiation between the developers and Central Logan.
Thanks, Mister Brooks. Counselor Watson.
Yeah, through you, Mister Mayor. Say, Mister Brooks, what's the amortization on that plant that we got down there at Southold there now? Another fifteen years or was it twenty years?
I believe it was a twenty year loan. So we're five years in.
Thank you, sir.
Other question.
Go ahead, please.
Through you, Mister Mayor. So can Sheddin not be able to treat their water because they don't have enough flow? I should say Southold not treat their water because they don't have enough flow south of Sheddin. But we can do it because we're at Port Stanley because there's more flow there at Kettle Creek. Is, is that why they might be in a bind? Just asking.
I wouldn't necessarily say that Southold is in a bind. They have a viable option to treat their own affluent. But as staff, we see a regional facility, a benefit to all users. It's a cheaper option. You know, if we were one region, this is likely the option that we would be looking at. So if we kind of break down the borders between Central Logan and Southold, this seems to be the most attractive option. It's the most economical option for Southold and it also provides benefit to Central Logan where we could start to. You know, collect some revenue through connection charges to help offset some of our expenses that we have on our wastewater system.
Yeah, supplemental through you, Mayor, Mister Mayor. And what was the, the connection charges were thirteen thousand dollars? Is that per household? Is that correct?
That's correct. That's per household. And I believe that was, I wasn't involved in that negotiation, but I believe that that was Southold's sanitary development charge at the time.
And then through you, Mister Mayor, how, how, how many households, sorry, could potentially be added to that then?
Well, I believe Southwolds are looking at roughly fourteen hundred homes in their future development areas between Fingal and Sheddin.
I'm gonna just ask a quick question. Oops, wasn't me. Was that a? So just, just on this, and if you don't mind, it's kind of in part and person. So the Saint Thomas plant has been around for fifty years on Sunset Drive. How many iterations have there been of that? The reason I'm asking is that, because I've known that it was when Saint Thomas was twenty five thousand and it's there when Saint Thomas is forty five thousand. So have there, have there been additions made to that? And if so, at what point? And can an addition be made to the Port Stanley facility to increase its capacity going forward?
Maybe I'll defer to Wendell to go through the history at the Saint Thomas plant. He may know better than, than I do. I don't have the history on the Saint Thomas plant.
Thank you. So I don't have the specific number of, of expansion, but definitely there has been some, but I think also what they have done of recent time is they've. Really upgraded the technology for the improvement so that they can push the treatment through quicker and manage it in a better way than the. Old system that you, there's been a lot of money spent on upgrading the actual system itself versus the capacity so they can get through the system faster.
Thank you. And I would assume we have a new system since it's twenty eighteen. Is that fair? Okay.
Yes.
But there is the opportunity to add capacity to that plant ten years from now if we needed it.
Absolutely. It's, we can add components to the plant and that ECA that I had mentioned. That dictates how much capacity we have through different components. So the first upgrade would be another bioreactor, which would upgrade our capacity from roughly. Twenty three forty three to thirty five to thirty six hundred cubic meters.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Watson, back to you.
Yeah, thank you, Mister. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a comment, yeah. I love the idea. I love working with my neighbors and hi neighbors back there. Yeah, it sounds like a positive that you brought forward to us, Jeff, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council? Thank you very much. If I could get a mover in a second, or? Counselor Halpin, Counselor Watson?
Mayor, so on the motion reads, moved by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Counselor Watson, that the presentation from the Director of Infrastructure and Community Services dated July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three be received and filed.
All those in favor? Posed? Carried? Now we're going to move to closed session. If I could get a mover in a second, or? Counselor Connors, Counselor Watson?
Mayor, so on the motion reads, moved by Counselor Connor, seconded by Counselor Watson, that council proceed into closed session at three ten P M in order to address a matter pertaining to personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees.
All those in favor? Posed? Carried? Thank you. If I could get a mover in a second to adjourn closed session, return to open session, please. Counselor Halpin, Counselor Watson?
Mayor, so on the motion reads, moved by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Counselor Watson, that council adjourned from closed session and returned to open session at three thirty-four P M.
All those in favor? Posed? Carried? C S one, if I could get a mover in a second, or? Counselor Connors? Counselor Bachman?
Mayor, so on the motion reads, moved by Counselor Connor, seconded by Counselor Bachman, that C S one be received for information and that council approve the employment agreement with Ms. Robin Greenall for the position of C A O clerk per the confidential report and further that said contract commence Wednesday, July twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three.
All those in favor? Posed? Carried? Bylaws? Two-eight-one-four, our confirmation bylaw. If I can get a mover in a second, or? Counselor Bachman, Counselor Connors?
Mayor, so on the motion reads, moved by Counselor Bachman, seconded by Counselor Connors, that bylaw two-eight-one-four be read a first and second time.
All those in favor? Posed? Carried, mover in a second, or? Watson, Counselor Connors, thank you.
Mayor, so on the motion reads, moved by Counselor Watson, seconded by Counselor Connor, that bylaw two-eight-one-four be read a third time and finally passed.
All those in favor? Posed? Carried? Adjournment, mover in a second, or? Counselor Bachman, Counselor Halpin, thank you.
Mayor, so on the motion reads, moved by Counselor Bachman, seconded by Counselor Halpin, that the special meeting of council dated Tuesday, July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three be adjourned at three thirty-five P M.
All those in favor? Posed? Carried?